Alright, good evening everyone. Thank you for joining us on this snowy evening. Before we stand to say the pledge, I'd like to just take a moment with tomorrow being Veterans Day, I'd like to thank all of our veterans out there for their service and sacrifice to our country. Just know that you are greatly appreciated, so thank you for all that you've done for us. Thanks. Now, if you so choose, we're gonna stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Alright, the first item on the agenda this evening is amendments to the agenda.
Mrs. Cherry, I have none to request this evening, thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is Students of the Month, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. And we're gonna take some time and recognize our Students of the Month from each of our buildings. Parents or grandparents, if you're here and your child is getting recognized, you want to move more up towards the front to get a better picture of them, that'd be great. And Mrs. Perkins, we're not quite ready at North this evening, right? Okay. So, Mrs. Hollingsworth, we're gonna skip ahead to South Elementary and recognize your Student of the Month, please.
Well, South Elementary is proud to introduce Ms. Rory Crooks as this month's Student of the Month. Rory is a student in Mrs. Carlson and Mrs. White's 4th grade classroom, and she lives on a farm with her mom, dad, and is one of five siblings. She has two sisters, Tenley and Piper, and two brothers, Landon and Leo. And she has a lot of goats, like seventy-five. Four llamas, three alpacas, lots of chickens, three barn cats, and two guard dogs named Jewel and Security. Rory is an incredible student at South Elementary. She's highly organized, which was our Warrior Way to Success skill we've been working on. According to Rory, South Elementary is great because all the teachers have good energy. She also said that the building is just a happy place to be, even as you walk in in the mornings. It's just a happy place to be, and we all agree with her. She loves to be the teacher helper of the week and the responsibility that comes along with it. Her favorite class is reading, and her favorite specialist is PE. In Rory's spare time, she enjoys playing video games with her brother, specifically Hogwarts Legacy on Luna. She also enjoys spending time with her siblings outside on the trampoline and on the swings. Right now, Piper and Tenley do all of the chores, but that changes to Rory as Piper goes off to college next year. She's most looking forward to feeding the baby goats, and least looking forward to having to help Tenley milk the goats. Rory said that the best influence on her life are her parents, her siblings, her teachers, and her best friends, Kylie Grayson and Elise. Her friends have helped her with her emotions and making new friends. Her mom helps her push through things, and her dad loves her even when she makes a bad decision. Her siblings, Piper and Tenley, have helped her to have a good attitude. Landon taught her how to play baseball, and Leo taught her how to play video games and football. Rory has many dreams and goals as she gets older. She has ideas to be a veterinarian, a teacher, a hairstylist, a nail technician, and a farmer. We're all standing in her corner excited to cheer her on no matter what she decides to become. If Rory ruled the school, everyone would go to class, and she would actually spend the day with me, which I was so excited about. Rory and I would walk around the school, visiting every classroom. We would go get Leo out of class and have him hang out with us as well. After he goes back to class, we would take her class outside for extra recess, and we would of course both play. After extra recess, we would go back to Mrs. Carlson's room and just hang out with the class for a while. Rory's mom would send in lunch for both of us, because her mom makes the best home lunches. And later in the day, we would DoorDash Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts for ourselves. I was it. Rory was nominated by your teachers, Mrs. White and Mrs. Carlson. Mrs. White had the following to say about Rory: Rory not only organizes her desk and her backpack, but she's organized in her thinking and her learning. Rory is a straight A student who uses these skills to expand her learning into her outside curricular activities. Keeping her studies organized allows her more time to work with the goats that she shows at the fairgrounds. Rory is an all-around organized individual who loves school, her friends, and her teachers. Mrs. Carlson added, Rory does an amazing job at being organized in the classroom. I see that she takes a few extra minutes at the end of our class, or at the end of a math lesson, to organize her desk and papers to be prepared for what happens next. What I also see in class is Rory's organization skills, which allow her to help others and be an awesome classmate who encourages them to do their best, and is willing to help her take the time to achieve her goals. Congratulations Rory on being South Student of the Month.
I'm a little tired after that. And Mrs. Burkey, would you like to introduce our middle school Student of the Month, please?
I feel like we're on theme tonight. FFA seems to produce some organized kiddos.
It does.
Alright, this month, I am proud to introduce Madison Kindred, our 7th grade Student of the Month. Maddie is the daughter of Katie and Ray, and sister to Erin and Georgia. When I had the chance to interview Maddie, it was immediately clear that animals are a huge part of her life. No matter what question I asked, her love for animals found its way into the answer, whether she was talking about her rabbits, her dogs, or her plans for the future. Maddie's favorite class is agriculture, because as she puts it, it's fun. She's active in both FFA and 4H, and she lights up when she talks about what she's learning in these programs. In FFA, she's participating in Skill-A-Thon and forestry this year, and she's excited to start livestock judging soon. In 4H, she raises and shows rabbits. She currently has eight, but already had plans when we talked to add a ninth in November, so I don't know if you have the ninth yet or not. She competes in showmanship, breed ID, and written testing, but what she really loves is caring for them day-to-day. Her favorite rabbit is a Belgian hare named Rue, who she told me binks when she's happy, and I didn't know what this means, but she explained that it's when she jumps and kicks her back legs in the air. Maddie's interest in rabbits started with her babysitter, who happens to run the rabbit portion of the fair, and it's grown into a true passion. She hopes to become a veterinarian one day and live on a farm. When she's not with her animals, Maddie enjoys working on ceramics for 4H. She's entered several pieces over the years: a rabbit, a turtle planter, a cowboy boot, and even a pig, although she laughed and she told me that one of them exploded in the kiln. If she could instantly master any skill, she said she'd like to learn how to make ceramics from scratch rather than using molds and kits. That mix of creativity, curiosity, and willingness to keep improving shows up in everything she does. Maddie was nominated this month for demonstrating our Warrior Way trait of organization. When I asked her what being organized means to her, she said, knowing where to find everything that's important, so that you're not always looking for things and can focus when you need to. Her teachers say she models this skill every day. One teacher wrote, I am proud to nominate Maddie Kindred as our 7th grade Student of the Month for exemplifying the college and career skill of organization. Maddie consistently demonstrates exceptional organizational habits that set her apart as a student preparing her for a successful future. She carefully organizes her class binders and notebooks using separate tabs and color coding, making it easy for her to find information quickly and efficiently. Maddie diligently documents all her assignments, tests, quiz reminders, and due dates, ensuring she stays on top of her responsibilities. These habits contribute significantly to her strong academic performance. Beyond her organizational skills, Maddie shows a natural curiosity and a genuine desire to learn. She actively engages in class and takes on leadership roles during group work, guiding her peers with confidence and cooperation. Maddie's ability to stay organized not only benefits her own learning, but also inspires those around her to adopt similar habits, preparing all students for success beyond the classroom. Her dedication to organization equips her with essential skills that will serve her well in her future career. Her agriculture teacher, Ms. Crosby, added, Maddie is the perfect example of a leader. She works hard behind the scenes to ensure tasks are completed and make sure everyone's voice is heard. I've enjoyed having Maddie in class and in FFA, and have been impressed by her kindness, compassion, and eagerness to grow as a leader. And her Spanish teacher, Mr. Satter, said Maddie is an exemplary student who's able to excel in class because her organizational skills allow her to process information and stay current with what's going on. Maddie is thoughtful, responsible, and kind, qualities that show up in how she treats both people and animals. She sets an example for her classmates through her work ethic, her organization, and her quiet leadership. It's easy to see why her teachers admire her so much. We're proud to recognize you, Maddie, as our 7th grade Student of the Month. Congratulations.
And just so you know, the addition we're working on at the high school right now, and the construction project, is the art room addition. It'll have its own throwing room, so you'll get your chance to do those ceramics from scratch. And now we're gonna recognize our high school Student of the Month, and Mr. Claude Felder is gonna do that for us. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce you to Maya Nguyen. Maya was nominated by Holly Fair, our Fax Department Chair, and she said Maya has been very involved this school year, where she can be bound up little warriors early in the morning. She then works with preschoolers as part of her early child education class. All of this before starting her day at Danville High School. She continues to study hard throughout the day in preparation to work with children one day, taking courses such as AP Psychology, Biomedical Sciences, and her ECE curriculum. She's the first to volunteer her thoughts, experiences, and assistance to her classmates. While also being a part of National Honor Society, CREW, and FCA, her work is truly centered around helping others and making a difference in our community. When Maya and I got to sit down together in my office and talk, Maya shared with me that her faith plays the biggest role in her life. She plans to pursue youth ministry in the future, possibly starting her studies at Ole Miss, where she has deep family roots. And it is my pleasure to introduce to you and to honor Maya Nguyen, Danville High School Student of the Month.
Congratulations Maya, and to all of our Students of the Month. And I want to thank parents and grandparents for providing such great kids, raising great kids, and also to our teachers for taking the time to recognize these great young folks. Thank you.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is student commendations, Dr. Schaefer.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Thanks, Mr. Rader. Test, 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 now we're picking the gas, alright. We're gonna take a few moments and recognize really outstanding young people, some of our students and student athletes. We have tonight a couple of different sets of awards. We have some athletic awards that are mixed in with a lot of academic awards, a lot of academic All-State awards. And for those of you that may or may not know, the All-State awards are given by the Representative Coaches Associations for each sport. So we have about four different sports to recognize tonight. And guys, we're just gonna call you up one at a time, we want you to stay up here until everybody is called, and so we'll have four different groups up here when we're finished. So, we're gonna begin with...
Taylor Jones, High School All-State Cheerleader. Brayden Cherkowski, Boys Tennis, Academic All-State. Ella McCormick, Volleyball, Academic All-State. Cassie Thompson, Volleyball, Academic All-State. Riley Buckner, Volleyball, Academic All-State. Ella Vanderbar, Volleyball, Academic All-State. Winsley Dorsey, Girls Soccer, First Team All-Conference, IHSA Sectional Champion, First Team All-County, All-District Honorable Mention, and All Academic Award. Sylvie French, First Team All-Conference, District Honorable Mention, and All Academic Madison Valenti, First Team All-Conference, First Team All-County, ISCA Top Team Player, and All-District Honorable Mention. Casey Hummel, All Academic Award. Baylor Myers, Second Team All-Conference, All-County Honorable Mention, ISCA All-District Caleb Blumer, ISCA All Academic Award. Chloe Hacker, ISCA All Academic Award. Sophia Wilson, ISCA All-District Honorable Mention. Avery Watson, All Academic Award. Isabella Schwartz, All-County Honorable Mention, All-District Honorable Mention. Alyssa Jones, ISCA All Academic Award. Sophia Pierce, All Academic Award. Alyssa Hagler, All Academic Award. Caitlin Manzer, All Academic Award. And of course, I'd like to add that all of these young ladies on the girls soccer team were sectional champions.
Ladies, I'm gonna ask you to turn around for just a second, so the board can see you, because it is all behalf of the board, of school trustees, I want to congratulate you on your fine academic and athletic accomplishments. We are thankful for you, thankful for the performances you put on, for your school and the way you represented us. So congratulations to you, and we're gonna turn you back around now, and Dr. Walker's gonna get your picture here as a group.
Roll, squeeze in, doors and windows, doors and windows.
Yeah, we'll take a couple rows here.
We will take a short break, for those of you who would like to exit. You know, I'd always love for you to stay. We do have a construction update, if anyone would like to stay and hear that.
I'm guessing our last kid didn't show up?
What's that? North Elementary student?
Yeah.
You're not gonna stay?
Yeah, if they show up late, it's pretty simple.
Is that you? Okay. It's him.
We were in the same cohort, in the admin cohort together.
What's that?
Matt and I were in the same admin cohort together. We taught away, along with Kathy Woodson.
I think he's like, snake, pick up.
Franklin. He came in after Peters.
Oh, that's my.
Yep. He moved.
He's got a lot of...
He was like the transition from...
Yeah. He took... Were you teaching? He's in the hallway?
No.
I started off in the...
And then you went to the...
Sure.
And then you went upstairs.
I think he was tucked in entryway there.
It's because he did some...
He taught at South.
You're good. Alright, the next item on our agenda is the construction update.
No community input?
Oh. Now's the time for community input. If anyone in the room would like to step forward. Seeing as there's no one stepping forward, thank you, Mr. Bryant, we will skip the community input. Next item on the agenda is the constructive construction update.
Hi, Gretchen.
Alright, good evening, thank you for having me. Yeah, we'll get into the transportation update, so you can kinda see here, I'll talk to the best one all the time this one, the product update, so it looks like they completed all the site. Yes, controls, demo, stabilization, and the buildup of the building pad. Working on site storm drains and installation of the new water line, installing some of the light pole bases and site electrical, completing some of the building under slab roughends, electrical and plumbing, and pouring the slab on grade and starting some of the block walls that we've seen. I did see that they actually started placing some of the asphalt for the bus parking lot, pouring this other side concrete pavement, and they're gonna continue setting the structural steel. Next one. And then, yeah, we just have some of the floor plans to help remind you kinda what it's gonna look like here, and then I believe there's a rendering here as well, and then I believe we got some actual site photos as well, if you've not been over there recently, Any questions on transportation? Next one here, so for the pool, Cora, if you could, could you go to the actual phasing plan, maybe to kinda help navigate this one here?
Yeah. So the big one today, so we did successfully turn over the new pool, so you guys did have your first swim practice today. So that was really exciting to see, and I know that kids were really excited to be there, and I know the construction team was pretty proud. It is a very beautiful facility, if you've not seen pictures of it, so we're excited for the community, we're excited for Danville. So that was a big, big checkmark milestone for the project. So we'll be in there for probably the next week, just completing some hunchless items, but yeah, it is turned over to you guys, along with the boys' basketball locker room as well. So that team was in there this afternoon, so that was actually part of 1B, so that area was turned over last week, too. So huge accomplishment from our team on that one. So the other phases that we're in right now is 1B, that is your performing arts, that is the band and choir, and the boys' basketball locker room. So right now, we're working on some of the overhead mechanical, electrical, there's a lot of bulkhead, ceiling work in there, doors and hardware and furniture. As of right now, we're looking at turning Phase 1B over to the school right at the New Year of this year. Boys Basketball, I said that was turned over, and then kinda Phase 12, kinda still in that green area is your new project Lead the Way, your new shop area. So right now, in there, a lot of the casework's already completed, we're working on finalizing some of the flooring, we'll get some of the owner furniture equipment and final clean in there, so as of right now, Project Lead the Way will also be turned over at the first of this year, too. Softball field, we did complete all the turf install. If you've driven by there, you'll kinda see the press box framing, finishes are going on, fencing, and then here this spring, we'll start working on some of the site grading, the landscape, the scoreboard will go up here next month, foul post, backstop padding and batting cages. Tendably, right now, we're looking around February, mid-February to turn the softball field over, so it'll be ready for the spring. Phase 5C, that is your existing classroom renovation, that area right now, we're kinda in the final finishing mode, we're just wrapping up some bathrooms, ceramic wall tiles, some plumbing finishes, TVs are installed, ceiling tiles are going in, and owner furniture will arrive here at the, I think it's December 22nd, so that area as well will also be turned over to the school January 1st, right at the New Year. So you basically have all 2B, 5A, and 5C at the New Year, so that whole kinda northeast corner. Six, or sorry, Phase 5B, the media center and alternative school, that area right now, we just finished up some of the overhead painting, the masonry walls are going on, mechanical, electrical, plumbing roughends. So right now, we're, there's a bunch of decorative clouds, acoustic clouds that we gotta put in the new library there, those are gonna be starting this week, and that area as well is scheduled to be turned over to you at the first of this, at the New Year. So there is a lot that we got kinda going on here for the first of the New Year, so yeah, Project Lead the Way, your performing arts, your alternative school, and your new media center library, and then the existing classroom renovation is all scheduled for this New Year, so that's the big push that we have upcoming. And then, future phases that we will be starting will be Phase 7, and then Phase 8, which is on the second floor, so once we hand over the new media center, we'll take over kinda the center of the school there, here, starting at the New Year. And then, we will also be working in Phase 6A that we're currently in now, that is the new art addition. So all the slab-on-grade concrete is completed, the CMU block walls are going up, and then structural steel will start to go up here in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll get the roof on, metal deck, and that area right there is scheduled to be turned over to you at the end, well, at the start of the next school year, will be everything in 6A. So still a lot going on, and then also, not to mention, we'll also be at North Elementary next summer as well. There's a lot of mechanical work that will be completed over there, and some door access controls, so will also be over at North Elementary.
When does the basketball court, Area 16, get redone?
16 will start this summer. So yeah, we'll get in there, we will add all the new fire protection, all the new lighting, painting, and then we'll replace the gym floor in there this summer as well.
And will that be ready for the start of school next year?
That is what we're pushing to be the start of school. We're also replacing the air handlers that are in the main gym, too, so there's quite a bit of work in the main gym. This summer is gonna be very busy, we'll be doing all Warrior Hallway, which was the hallway between Auxiliary Gym and the main gym. We'll be doing the commons area between 1B and the auditorium. We will also be doing the main gym, like I said, and then we'll be starting the cafeteria in Phase 10, and then we'll be starting your new mega chemistry lab in Phase 9 this summer, so a lot of work this summer.
Are those the last phases then? Would that be the last phases to do?
No, we'll still, you still have Phase 11, 14, and then there's just a little bit in Auxiliary Gym that we'll be doing, in the wrestling room up there, there's some finishes that we have in Auxiliary Gym, but I would say for the most part, I think right now, we're at like sixty-six percent complete with the project, so a lot of the major milestones are done, and now we're just gonna be starting to kinda do the renovation part.
When's the targeted overall completion date of high school?
It'll be fall of '27.
Fall of '27. Was the pool just turned over today?
We got the certificate last week, but yes, it was turned over to you guys today.
So it's the November 1st target date, is that right?
November 10th.
10th was the date? Okay. I had it numbered, the 1st in my, I was trying to burst your little bubble. Okay, I had it numbered, the first in my, I was trying to burst your little bubble. I guess I was off on my, my calendar.
We are, uh, planning forward to do a little ribbon cutting, uh, for that facility, uh, their first home meet, I believe, is the 23rd. I thought we'd do something just right that evening, just ahead of their meet, so we're working on those plans as well.
There's some pictures too, Corr, if you want to go back, um, as well. So that's the new pool corridor, we're still working on some of the display cases, and then you can kind of see there, that's the, um, renovations of the, um, existing classrooms on the far left. And then right there on the top left, that is your new, um, new media center, so everything's already painted overhead, and we've got a lot of bulkhead works, and you can kind of see on the top part right, that is the new choir room. And then you can see on the bottom left, that is the new art addition on the north end of the building, and then on the far bottom right, that is the new project, uh, Lead the Way, the, one of the classrooms in the woodshop.
Where's the media center, is it in the same spot as, as it was the library, or it's a different spot?
Different, different spot, so it's, it's where the, uh, old art room, um.
It's back over there.
So that, that'll be the new media center, so the old, uh, band and choir and art room, that, that's where the new media center, alternative school will be located. And then culinary, life skills will go up to the second floor where the existing library was at.
That's right.
Yep. There's a new softball field, um, turf turned out amazing, so yeah, we're wrapping up just some finishes out there, we'll get the press box framed up and then some site work, and then that's the boys' basketball locker room bathroom there, so that was turned over as well today to the, to the team. And then obviously the, the weight room, that was turned over already, and then you can kind of see a photo on the bottom right, uh, of the pool, but yeah, I would definitely recommend, if you haven't seen it in person, to, to go in there, it's.
It's interesting, because those are the, the renditions are on the top, the original renditions, and then the, the actual is on the bottom, so they came out pretty close.
And then, yeah, there's another cost by phase breakdown, um, of kind of where we're at, um, project wise, on the budget, so it's broken out per phase, so.
Has anything changed on that since, uh, twenty-three?
No, so yeah, this is just up, up to date, um, through our, um, October billing, so of kind of where we're at through the project, I said you can kind of see percent complete there, we're roughly at sixty-six percent. So like I said, a lot of the major milestone, bigger ticket items have been taken care of, so now we're just kind of getting to the, the remodel portion of the project.
And still could, still going to try and come in under budget?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions for Nick? Nick, sorry.
That's my brother.
See, that's, do you really have a brother?
He's, he's at the Parks Department.
See, that's where I get confused, I know him very well, I apologize. All right, thank you for coming this evening, I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, next item on the agenda, approval of the October 13th regular school board meeting minutes. Need a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, comments or questions? All in favor, that passes unanimously.
Wait.
Aye.
Aye.
I apologize, it has been a day, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, I'll, I'll get better here, I promise. All right, next item on the agenda, approval of the October 27th, 2025 special public meeting minutes, need a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, second? Thank you, Mr. Hemsel, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. Next item on the agenda, treasures report, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry, uh, October fund balance in our property and state tax supported funds was seven million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. We had actual expenditures in our education fund of one million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, we had no expenditures in our debt service fund, and the operations fund had expenditures of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. We did transfer three hundred thousand from the education fund to the operations fund, and that brings our corporation's total transfer for the year to eleven point nine four percent of the total education fund revenue, or twelve point nine four percent of the total state tuition support. I would ask for the board's approval of our treasures report, and happy to answer any questions.
All right, motion to approve the treasures report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, comments or questions?
Just to clarify on the transfer of eleven point nine four. Again, you're anticipating that's going to be closer to fifteen percent in twenty-six?
Correct, yes, but fourteen would be, is kind of the target that we have for right now.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of claims, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry, uh, for the month, we had pre-written claims of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. We had, uh, our voucher claims of eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-nine cents, uh, bringing total claims for the month to one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. I would ask for the board's approval of our claims for the month of October, and happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve the claims as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsel, comments or questions?
Question, I, Hendrick's Power, the three phase, this, how far did that have to come?
That came from the corner of Lincoln and Mill, or, I'm sorry, Lincoln and Mackey, so it basically ran all the way down to the far end of the property here.
Just to get it down, but Duke's, Duke services the, what, the South Elementary and?
Duke is, Duke will service all of our properties except for transportation.
Except for transportation?
Yes, the actual line between service of Duke and Hendrick's Power runs right through the middle of this building. Uh, when it was built, I don't know how or why, but it was decided that Duke would be the provider here for the middle school, but once we get on the other side of the middle school, that is solely Hendrick's Power.
Hendrick's Power, I, I assumed it was coming from the west, they were bringing the three face, but it's down here.
They do have power out there, but because it's the three phase, they didn't have that over in that direction, because it's all residential that way, so that's why they had to bring it from the other direction and come all the way across.
Do we have three phases at the maintenance facility?
Yes.
Is that Duke's there, or is that Hendrick's Power there too?
That is Duke.
That's Duke, the three phase already there.
Yeah, like I said, once we're all done, the transportation facility should be the only one on Hendrick's Power.
The only one on Hendrick's?
Yeah.
Dr. Schaefer, I see we got the expenses for the contracted buses, how many drivers are we currently short, transportation to fulfill our routes, so we can get to a point where we're no longer contracting buses?
We are making progress, in fact, we just, on this dock, I hired another driver, and we have a couple more in training. Um, and speaking to Mrs. Swanson the other day, we're hoping that as we bring on these next couple of drivers, that will allow us to move away from our contracted drivers here, uh, as soon as we get them licensed. One of the challenges has been the backlog at the testing sites, so we're getting drivers through with their training, we can't get them into testing very quickly to get, to get that finished. So we anticipate, I, I can't set a hard timeline on it, but I would say as we move through December here, you know, we, we're going to get ourselves in a better position to move away from the contracted drivers.
So how many drivers are we short right now?
Uh, three, I believe.
And so that amount that's shown there for the contracted buses is for three routes?
I think we started with four anyway.
Yeah, we started with four and we've reduced by one driver.
But we've also, in, in fairness, we've also had to add a couple routes as we get overcrowding, so we've not been able to just replace, you know, each, each new driver that came on didn't simply replace a contracted driver, because we've replaced one, we've had to add a couple other routes in addition, so we are, we are making ground.
So when do you hope to be done with contracted bussing?
I would hope sometime probably in January, that's if everybody who's on board with us now stays there, and the people we're training now, uh, progress forward and complete their training and come on board.
And have we gotten buses prior to the, well, after the referendum, you took away bussing for some areas in the corporation, have we gotten back to full bussing everywhere, or?
No, well, we provide limited bussing, um, in some of those areas for the kids that go over to north, uh, but the kids that come to south, uh, are still in the walk zone, we still have the walk zone at Clear Creek, and then over towards the Berry Knoll area, those walk zones are still in place, it would be our goal to try to get to a point where we can bus those, those students. Uh, we just, we've had, we've been so tight with overcrowding, so we've had to add, just to get kids here that live out further away, uh, then we want to try to replace our contracted drivers out. And I, I will say that the contracted folks we've had work, have done an excellent job, they really have, and they've helped us out tremendously, it's been our goal all along as we move through first semester to try to get them replaced out.
So you still do, if I understood what you just said, you still have a goal that you want to get bussing back to what it was pre-referendum, two thousand and nineteen?
We would like to, yes.
You, you talked about testing, where do they, where does that take place at?
They, they have identified sites around the state, some of those are easier to get into, and some of them aren't very close, um, now you said that, I just asked, uh.
That really doesn't matter, the question, my question I've got is, can somebody within our, our, our community or our, our staff get licensed to do the training and, and administer those tests in-house, is that a possibility that you could get to?
I don't, I think you have to be in approved site through the state, through the Department of Motor Vehicles, Department of Transportation.
To get, to get there.
Yeah, they're, they're designated sites for that. Now, to your question, I'm not sure what all that takes, and maybe a fair question to ask.
I know of other companies that do provide the CDL training, like say at Keystone, they, they can do all that in-house and get the training done there, so I, I just wondered if that was a possibility, something you've looked at.
I know we've sent some to, down on the south side, and we've sent some into Indy, but those aren't the two nearest sites.
Yeah, and we do a lot of training in-house, this is just more the DOT side of it, uh, and so it's to pass that test.
The final test, okay.
Yeah, that's more, and it's in Whitestown is typically is the closest one, uh, the rest are, I believe, in maybe Evansville and then up in Chicago area, so, yeah, those, Whitestown's the only close one that makes sense for us, and they're extremely busy, so we're kind of left at their mercy.
Appreciate, yeah, thank you.
I have a question, in regards to our contracted bus drivers, had, has there been consideration about keeping them on board and to allow us to open up these areas that were not bussing currently?
We could consider that, I, I will tell you, it is expensive, uh, the contracted services cost us more because they have a lot of overhead to cover, um, we could consider it, but given our budget, um, that would be a, a, a tough consideration from a cost standpoint. Uh, and again, it was interesting, because we were at a countywide meeting here recently, and the other districts in the county are going through the same thing we are in terms of finding, um, finding drivers. So we're, we're moving in a positive direction, but I also know a lot of times this is two steps forward, one step back too, because about the time you think you've got things covered, you can expand, you, you lose somebody. Um, so we are cautiously optimistic is the best way I can put it right now, our first goal is to cover our extended routes, which we've been doing, then replace, uh, our contracted drivers, um, and then try to expand services to pick up those other areas.
So I see here we pay, is this eighteen thousand a month for our three drivers? What do you think three in-house drivers would cost, a third of that, half of that? Maybe half?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we, so it makes sense to relieve them, but still continue to work to find our own?
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate our, all of our drivers and, um, Mrs. Swanson and her staff, they've been working very hard, been making a lot of good progress. Um, I, I would say the, uh, the demeanor and the mindset of our, uh, transportation department is, is really good, uh, it's really improved, I think over the last year or so, and we're moving in a positive direction, and we're pleased with the direction we're going, we hope we can do all those things we want to do.
I just, one other question, I noticed that on one of the spreadsheets there, there was a Midstate Superintendent's Conference, twenty twenty-six, that twenty-six, twenty-eight hundred dollars, that's just to get in the front door?
That's registration and lodging.
Registration and lodging, is that just for yourself then?
Yes.
Okay, that comes out of the operations fund?
It will, I'm gonna, I'm paying my own airfare there, I'll cover all my meals and try to pick up some of those other costs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of payroll claims, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry, uh, we do have two payroll claims here this evening, we have our October twenty-fourth payroll of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety, or eighty-seven cents, and we have our November eighth payroll claim of seven hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, that's both, both total payroll claims for the month of one million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents. So I would ask for the board's approval of our payroll claims here for the month, and happy to answer any questions.
I need a motion to approve the payroll claims as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the, on the agenda is old business, which we have none of, so we will move along to new business. Consider approval of personnel recommendations, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry, um, as we look at the personnel report before you, I want to recommend approval of the report, and as we regretfully accept Chief Matt Olive's resignation this evening, so he can move on to some other great career opportunities, almost as great as this one. We, uh, we also want to, uh, recommend and welcome Officer Kim Karashenko, who is with us this evening as well, uh, as a position of interim chief here at the Danville Schools Police Department. And, um, there's several other things in the report tonight, but, uh, we do appreciate the work that, uh, Matt has done for us, and appreciate, uh, Kim being able to step up and take on that leadership role on the interim basis, so with that, I'd, uh, recommend approval of the personnel report as submitted.
All right, motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsel, comments or questions?
Question, hearing that news, Dr. Schaefer, um, do you plan on continuing to man the Danville Community Police Department? Danville Community School Corporation Police Department with four staff, or do you have plans to make adjustments, what are your?
Uh, yeah, based on budget, again, as we look forward into twenty twenty-six, uh, we're going to see how things go with three officers, uh, for a while, so we're, uh, asking Officer Karashenko to, uh, take leadership here for a couple months, so we can see how things are going. Um, if we feel like we can reduce to three officers, uh, then we will hire internally, uh, for the chief position, and, uh, work the schedule so that it works. I would tell you openly that we are seriously considering, uh, doing that, um, just to, um, help control our operations costs moving forward.
So you think we're going to be okay being now one officer regarding school safety at this time in our society?
I, I, I prefer four, to be honest with you, uh, but we, we have done it with one, we've done it with two, we've done it with three, and now we're, you know, we've been working with four. Uh, four is the best, I think, uh, to be honest with you, uh, but I also know that we have limitations of what we can do as well.
Have you made final decisions on the coordinator of operations position?
Uh, we're, we're getting by, I think we're, we're hitting our stride a little bit with that, uh, I'd say we are unlikely, uh, to refill that position. Um, we may need to pick up a little slack here and there on a couple of other positions, you know, to, you know, again, uh, make sure those duties fit well with everybody, but uh, right now, I'd say we're about ninety-five percent, we're not going to refill the coordinator position there.
So, so given that information, and I understand some of the budget constraints, but knowing what you're trying to do to work through addressing those budget constraints, still have a little concern about going less than four officers, knowing how strongly you wanted those four officers before, and how good a job they're doing, so I would ask you to really look at that and determine that we perhaps don't go a long time before we would be full staff of four officers, given where public safety and school safety is these days in our society.
Yep, I, I agree, um, it's just hard decisions are going to have to be made as we move into twenty-six and into twenty-seven, so these are things we are strongly considering, and we'll look at both sides of that to see what we're able to do, but.
And those are paid out of the operations fund as well?
It is, it is, and unfortunately, the operations funds, we've talked about, there are only so many places we can cut, you have a very limited amount of that operations fund you can cut without getting into personnel positions, unfortunately.
And again, it's not a lot of money, but I guess wondering about the, the conference I just asked you about, it's not a lot, but isn't there some way that professional development can get done with what's offered through the Indiana State Superintendent's Association, Indiana School Board Association, and Indiana, or Principals Association?
Well, professional development is not something we've particularly curtailed yet, I mean, we're, we're careful with it, we're, you know, we're trying to be frugal with it, and like I said, in my case, that's professional development, I go to about one or maybe two conferences a year like that. I've already cut out the one for next year, this one's out of the twenty twenty-five budget, and I'm also paying my airfare, so, you know, being a professional learning organization, we have to have professional development for us to improve and move forward, so this is a unique. So this is a unique opportunity, it is a unique conference and it's one of the best I've ever been to. So I feel like that's something that is important to move forward with, um, but we'll look at all opportunities where we can reasonably cut cost.
Thank you, I look forward to evaluating that decision of yours.
How do we plan to, I guess the officers will rotate around, around buildings throughout the day? That, that's kind of the plan?
Yeah.
There'll be a, there'll be a face there at some point in the day?
Yes, and that, we've had those conversations. We want to be seen in each building, uh, each day. And that's a, that's a plan for scheduling that Officer Karashenko will work on too and make sure that, that fits well with, uh, with the group.
Yeah, I'm not asking for exact times because I don't think that probably needs to be shared, but, um, just want to make sure there are, there is a face there.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, the next item on the agenda is the second preliminary determination hearing for the building projects. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet at the back of the room, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the building project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed buildings project under consideration. The notice of preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. The first preliminary determination hearing was held on, held on September eighth, twenty twenty-five. At this time, I will ask that bond counsel explain the purpose of this hearing.
Good evening. Under Indiana law, anytime the school corporation wants to issue over a certain capacity of a project, the school board has to hold two hearings. As the president said, we held our first hearing in September, this will be our second hearing tonight. The purpose of the hearing is truly to set the maximum amount and to set maximums in rate and impacts. Again, this, at your September meeting, you were asked just to hold a hearing tonight. You will also be asked to consider resolutions and this first hearing is in regards to the buildings project.
All right, we will now hear from Mr. Herbert about the process of determining and communicating the buildings project to the community and the need for the buildings project.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Again, as, uh, Kristen had mentioned, this is our second hearing this evening. Uh, we will follow this up with a resolution shortly after the hearing. Uh, but as a reminder to kind of look back on what the purpose of this project is for, uh, as we look and see that the growth that has been coming to the community, uh, and especially looking over the last two years and the ADM growth that we, excuse me, that we have seen, uh, we foresee that, uh, there is a potential here in the near future uh, that we are going to have to look at building another building, uh, perhaps. Uh, at this point, the, the actual grade levels have not been established, but, uh, most likely more towards an elementary level grade, uh, building. Uh, what this is doing for us this evening is this just is giving us an opportunity, uh, to make sure that we have all the tools possible that we would need in order to be able to do this in the future, uh, without having to go to a referendum. Uh, we know, we have discussed, uh, at length, uh, some of the legislative changes that have occurred, uh, not only this current year, but even in previous years prior to this, uh, with, uh, regards to requirements on rate, uh, from the debt service fund. Uh, and we do have this opportunity that we were able to, uh, to take advantage of, uh, to make sure that we have just again, another option once we move forward. Uh, this is not locking us into doing anything, this is not the final step. Uh, there are other many, there are actually many more steps that will have to come, uh, that requires administrative work that would also require the board's approval, uh, before anything could be officially started from a project standpoint or even issuing additional debt, uh, from that point. So, again, this is just to make sure that we maintain, uh, the ability, uh, to have something in the future uh, that would allow us to, uh, improve and to increase, uh, the district without having to go to a referendum. Uh, because a, as the law currently sits today, uh, the way that it would be is that if we were not having, if we didn't have this tool in our toolbox, referendum would be the only way that we could get another building built. So again, just trying to make sure that we have all the options available to us in the future, uh, when that day would arise that we need to pursue this.
All right, thank you. We will now hear from Stiefel Nicholas and Company Incorporated, our underwriter, about how the proposed building projects will be financed as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Good evening, thank you for having me, great to see you all again. Uh, Corey is going to bring up my presentation momentarily, uh, that has the ringers and the guitar.
As soon as Vivy shares here. And we're just spinning.
And we love technology.
Yes, let's try again.
We love it even better when it works.
Yeah, let's close out, start again. It is just spinning, so. Any suggestions?
Hopefully close it and decline out and then maybe watch it. Third time's a charm, hopefully. I know it's working earlier.
I can go restart it.
It's just, it's just, it's just spinning, it says all displays and it's just spinning for me. Yeah, I think, I think the board should, should see. I think we've seen it, but it's good to, good to see it again. Have you been working on your songs, Matt? You could entertain us a little bit there?
Tell jokes?
No.
I'll tell you what, this happens more than you think. Corey, do you want me to, Dr. Schaefer, you want me to talk through them now while they're trying to fix or you want to just?
What would, what would the board like?
Give it a couple of minutes and see.
Do you want to see his presentation?
Are we going to see it like the next three times here or?
Are we going to see the same presentation for the next hearing?
Um, no, I, I, well, I have two separate pages.
You got two different, okay.
They'll lead the same parameters, different numbers, but same, same format. But they're both together, so.
Try it now, Corey, it says it's not waiting on you anymore.
I don't want you to vote, you need to vote.
Okay, yeah, we better see.
Is there a way to just email us the?
I can, let me, uh, see if I can just put it in board docs.
I was going to say, cause I don't have it in my.
It might, you might have to, if he does, you might have to just hit the refresh up there, but it should, should come up for you. It's probably in board doc from a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah.
That one just came back out.
That one's stuck on the, uh, construction.
Corey, what if you don't try all these cards, I wonder if you try. While you're waiting for that to come up, I have a question for you, Dr. Schaefer.
Sure.
At, at the September, which was I think our first hearing on this, I had, we, you gave us a sample timeline and I requested a more formal timeline, you sent that to us, I appreciate that. And on that formal timeline though, that you had sent me, it references that November seventh is the end of the day of the thirty period, thirty-day period in which an application petition may be filed requesting that either project be placed on a referendum. And that date for that was November seventeenth to finish that thirty-day window. Do we not need to wait for the end of that thirty-day window?
This, this will extend that timeline, so that timeline has now been extended because we moved back to this date. So we'll have thirty days forward from now.
From now, okay. Thank you. So the dates listed on that timeline that you had sent me, again, thank you for sending it to me. What's listed is the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Those are the publications to the public, but, um, this particular second hearing, where is that listed on that?
The timetable's been revised since the one that you received because.
What date, was it revised?
October tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a reason that wasn't updated and sent out, Dr. Schaefer?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we just don't typically send out the timelines, like we requested one before, but we certainly can provide that to you. That's, that's not an issue whatsoever.
I asked for the timeline and then, again, I thank you for sending me the timeline that you sent, but I guess having requested it, if there wasn't updates to it, I thought that it'd be kind of like a calendar, if a calendar gets updated, we'll get notified of the updates.
Yeah, it, it simply will push those timelines back from here thirty days, uh, forward.
I did upload it into board docs, so if you refresh board docs.
It'll be in seven-two then, Corey.
With that?
Will be in seven-point-two.
Yes, yeah, I put it in seven-point-two.
Yep, it's in there.
Let me see. Let's display three, let's try to just connect to that one. Something happened. Maybe? Oh, there we go. Now we're getting something. All right.
Okay?
All right.
There we go.
Back on track.
So, uh, regardless of the building project, these are the legal parameters that you will see in the resolution. Par amount of bonds, ninety-five million, as a reminder, that's a maximum, bar any number up to that, you cannot go above it. Estimated professional cost, three hundred thousand dollars, leading ninety-four point seven million available for hard and soft costs, the money going into the actual project. Estimated interest expense is listed at eighty million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. Uh, that's based on a seven percent interest rate. We put a lot of conservatism into the interest rate, uh, given this may not be issued for who knows how long. Uh, we need to stay very conservative. You're issuing these bonds today, uh, you're somewhere probably just under four percent. Uh, so if these bonds ultimately get issued, uh, at what we would hope to be a much lower interest rate, that number should come down substantially, so that eighty million is based off a full seven percent. Max annual lease rental, uh, that's the highest amount that you can pay in any one year, that's listed at thirteen million dollars. Uh, thirteen million dollars on your current net assessed value comes up with a maximum tax rate impact of ninety-five point nine five cents for one hundred dollars of assessed value. Uh, the estimated net increase, uh, that's the increase over what we expect that total rate to be, is listed at nine point six eight cents. Uh, and then the last two pieces of information that they have in there by statute is school corporations' max annual payments as a percent of your net assessed value, one point zero one percent. And then the direct and overlapping debt, this is your debt plus all of the other unit's debt that a taxpayer would see as a percent of your net assessed value, uh, that is thirteen point two six percent. Happy to answer questions if you want to do that now or wait till, uh, later.
If, I've, I've got one. If this was issued today or five years from now, let's say.
Yeah.
We're in that timeframe. What would use for a three-point-nine-nine interest rate, in your expert opinion, what? I know it says seven right now, but you said this, I'm just speculating here. What, what impacts will this, will we have enough debt falling off from other projects or is this going to raise property taxes?
Um, I don't know that I can answer that specifically because it is based on obviously the time. You have debt rolling off over the course of the next couple of years, that, that is for sure. Uh, in terms of your actual levy, uh, part of that is going to depend on how the last, uh, high school project bonds are issued. Uh, but our hope is that in the future, that you have enough debt rolling off, the timing of this, uh, will certainly be important, but that it would be layered on as other debt is falling off. Now, can it a hundred percent be levy neutral at that time? There's just too many factors going on to answer that specifically, but obviously, anything that we would do would be, um, keeping that in mind and trying to make sure that the impact is as least as possible on the taxpayer. We would be coming back to you with charts and graphs with a lot more information prior to us issuing any bonds at that point, so that you can make an informed decision.
What's the direct and overlapping debt as a percent of, what's that mean?
That is all of your debt, all of the school corporation's debt, plus all of the debt of the other units. So when you get your tax bill, right, you're paying taxes for the library, for the city, for whatever, it's all of their debt as well, divided by the net assessed value of the school corporation and that.
That's what that.
So one of the metrics that S and P looks at, they are the agency that rates, uh, your debt. We just went through that process within the last month, actually just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it's one of the main metrics that they, they look at as part of what they do.
So having heard you, part of that comment was, you mentioned, one of the impacts, to answer his question, was how we roll out the last part of the bonds for the high school project. I think that's on the docket tonight.
That's correct.
Dr. Schaefer, hearing him say that, knowing that that's on the docket tonight, um, do you anticipate how the bonds are being rolled out for the last phases of the high school project in combination with this to have a impact on raising property taxes for the community?
Yeah, that's, that's why we hire the professionals to help us with that structuring out, because you're going to issue, uh, the last issuance for the high school project is remaining, uh, roughly thirty-nine million dollars, which will be issued out. That's something we planned forward for. And I know we're kind of asking to look into the crystal ball here as to that project, you know, if and when that comes to fruition. But a lot of that's going to depend on how quickly we, we grow out enrollment-wise, uh, what interest rates do, uh, how quickly the debt falls off and how far, so it's, it'd be a little bit of a guessing game for me to, uh, I would say if, if, if Matt's not able to tell you that, I'm not going to be able to tell you that with any assurance as to exactly what that's going to look like.
But we know how the debt's going to fall off.
So.
It's a payment schedule, right? You can't pay ahead.
Yeah, if I could just add to that a little bit, so school corporation going back a few years ago, it had the, the debt service rate at eighty-nine cents, right? And that was kind of the target moving forward. You did bring it down in twenty-four and twenty-five. All the modeling would have been done, kind of staying tax rate neutral moving forward. So you guys were experiencing significant maybe growth over the last five, six, seven years. SCA one is going to flip that on its head. And so when we were structuring all of this debt, we were structuring it to hit the stated tax rate goals, right? And so we had certain estimated levies moving forward. Those estimated levies would have been increasing to hit that stated tax rate goal. The levy is going to go up from this current year, there's, there's no way around that. The levies that we would have shown over the last two years are not going to change based on this high school project. Essentially, we're solving for the same levy that we have been solving for the last couple of years. The tax rate, a hundred percent, I don't want to say a hundred percent, based on people way smarter than me seeing the impact of SCA one, they are projecting your assessed value to go down. If we have our levy going up and our assessed value going down, the tax rate for sure is going to go up. And so I guess I want to just make clear that the, the levies that we were estimating over the last couple of years are not anticipated to increase above what we have been showing the public. As those roll off, we would hope to put this debt on, if that's the will of the board at that time, to not increase levies. Now, depending on how much is issued and when is issued, could levies go up? Absolutely, but that will be the decision that the board makes in the future if these bonds are ultimately issued. Absolutely, but that will be the decision that the board makes in the future if these bonds are ultimately issued.
So hearing that, when do you believe that he would be bringing it before the board, for the board to determine if that's their will?
Again, there's some guesswork here, and uh I say the demographic study, that demographic study would tell me that short of additional housing additions being put in, and even when they're put in, there's a couple of years of lag before you start to see kids from them. It, it looks like that enrollment-wise, we're okay out there about four or five years. In other words, we have enough space once we're built out here with our current project to sustain that growth for at least four or five years. Because what we're seeing is, we're seeing some growth sort of peak now, uh, we see it hold pretty steady this next year, and it starts to come down a little bit. Uh, and where we see that growth begin to slow first is at primary elementary. We see it slow next at intermediate, middle school, high school. So middle school, high school growth's still going to be pretty robust for the next three, four, five years. Um, and we see growth even out beyond that, it's just not at the rate we've seen it the last two years. We've been growing at five, six percent, which is pretty crazy growth. Um, when that slows down to one or two percent, that's a lot more manageable. But again, what I'm seeing in that demographic report right now is, once we get out there about five years, we're probably going to be using up most of our available space at like South Elementary in particular, and at the middle school. We'll be most pressed at those two buildings, which is really what we anticipated, um, back, you know, back a few years ago, those two would max out first, and it looks like that's probably what's going to happen. So at that point, it's, it's, you know, sort of how, you know, how many kids you want to squeeze into a building. Again, things can change in there. Um, again, demographic reports are projections, uh, to some extent. Uh, we, we believe they'll be pretty accurate, but again, if another housing addition goes in, can that shorten that timeframe up a little bit? Yeah, it could. Um, or if things slow down more than, than what we're foreseeing right now, it could, you know, extend it out there another year or two. So I, I would say we're just, you know, a lot of guesswork, but um probably not five to seven-year range, is my best guess.
So it sounds like we got a snow globe that's got a lot of snow moving in it, making it very difficult at this time to see the targets of, to the answers to the questions we're asking. Is that what you're saying?
I would agree with that, yes. I would love to be able to give you concrete answers here tonight, there's just too much going on. SCA one is, is not going to be fully implemented for the next six years. We have projections, we have no hard data.
So you don't, you don't see this, you don't see the snow globe giving any more clarity for a couple of years?
I think next year when we get the first set of real hard data of the impact, I think we will have better projections than we have right now. It's somewhat guesswork, we have a lot of smart people that are doing what I hope are accurate projections. Uh, I'm not going to put my money behind them until I see the actual results next year, the first year of implementation.
I think uh the, the point Matt made that we talked about a little bit is, we sort of talked about that teeter-totter model and that fulcrum, that point, that is, that's the levy. And we know what that levy needs to look like for the next several years. Um, now after that, it's just a matter of what AV does to determine then what your rate's going to have to do to, to make those payments. Again, those are things we've been planning forward on, uh, that's nothing different than what we planned all along. Once we get out there in five to seven years, as more debt comes off, we see what rates do, we see how fast that need comes up for a future board. Um, and then just determining, you know, what's that future board need to do, is I, you'll get to a point, as a district, you'll get to a point where you have to have more space. Um, and then, you know, you try to do that in the most economical way that you can.
So, hearing this and knowing that the snow globe's not going to show any more clarity probably until perhaps next year, but also knowing that also on the docket tonight is the approval of the maintenance project. Um, which has to do with, again, using that, also depends on debt falling off, correct? How does that start to come into play in terms of when we have debt falling off and when we're, again, going to be able to see you guys bringing something before the board, spending on that again as well? I mean, they kind of go hand in hand in my mind, even though their next one is listed separately, but.
Yeah, they do, um, I would say the maintenance projects, again, those can be broken up. Uh, I know we're looking at twenty-five million as the maximum for the maintenance project. Uh, that will be broken up into probably several smaller geo-bonds, uh, to kind of try to do the strategy that we've had over the last four years, as much as we can moving forward with so many unknowns. Uh, because again, like I said, we'll work with Stiefel, uh, to try to determine what those net assessed values are going to do. Uh, we will, you know, because in the past where we've been trying to maintain that stable debt rate, we've been able to do geo-bonds for four and five million dollars. And we'd be able to pay those back in a year typically is what we've done. Um, as the, as the NAV continues to come down, which is what we're expecting through Senate Bill One, then that might force us to, to be a little more conscious because we're not necessarily incurring debt to maintain that rate. We're going to be incurring debt to make sure that we are just surviving as a district. Uh, again, because we, we're using the debt to offset the operational expenses like we have with our geo-bonds, so it would be the same thing that we would do with these maintenance projects. Uh, and I think we've discussed with the board here that it would be very clear and very specific projects that we would start looking at. Uh, whereas before, uh, we were trying to find, uh, the best use for those dollars to make sure that, again, we're doing improvements throughout the district, to make sure that we're improving, you know, students' learning abilities and improving their experiences. Whereas now, it's probably going to be shifting more towards absolute, okay, this is getting ready to break, and so now we need to fix it. Uh, you know, one of the examples that we've used is the HVAC system here at the middle school. Uh, we right now, we do not have control over some of our HVAC system here at the middle school, uh, just because it's such an old program. Uh, so that's an upgrade that we're going to have to do. We know that here at the middle school, again, this building's almost twenty years old, with a twenty-year-old building, it's going to start coming with things, they're going to start breaking down, that we're going to have to improve and have to replace. Uh, so it's working on things like that.
So as you mentioned that, and you, for example, if you needed to take out a geo-bond in twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-eight, how, that debt that you take on, even though it's going to be paid off in a year, how does that impact the ability of the, that five to seven-year scope that Dr. Schaefer mentioned in reference to when this may need to get off the ground?
They're still going to go hand in hand, but again, eh, there's, it's the globe, there's so much unknown, because we still won't know exactly what the net assessed value is doing at that point in time. You know, what we're seeing and what is being forecasted is that it is going to be lower, uh, it will inquire, require a little bit higher of a levy. Uh, it will also depend on how much we do take, uh, from both the maintenance side and both the, the building side, which is this project here, uh, as we phase that in, to know what the impact is truly going to be.
I think, I, I think to try to help answer that too, I think that's going to look a lot like what we've been doing, because that, the, the maintenance amount, we're not going to take that all in one chunk, we're going to take it in small chunks. Hopefully, continue the model we've had, pay it back in a short timeline, put on the next one, and just keep that rolling forward, which, when you look at a histogram of those stacked debts, that's usually a pretty small layer in there. Uh, and it's something we've been accustomed to, because that's something we've been doing. So I don't think it looks a lot different, I think it just gives us another source to work from to help offset some of those operational costs.
I have three things. Um, just to clarify, this is our last chance to issue this bond, correct? Like, we can't issue bonds in the future.
Well, to clarify, we're not issuing the bonds yet.
We're reserving the right to be able to vote as a board in the future to issue a bond.
Correct, if the, if, if the board decides not to pursue this this evening, then our only opportunity to borrow any dollars moving forward would be a referendum.
Okay, yep, that's what I thought, and then, so that was kind of two out of my three. Um, if the board in the future decides they want to go ahead and use this bond that we're reserving the right to have or the ability to get, but they decide, instead of building a new school, we want to add on to a school or remodel the school, can it be used for that as well, or is it only to build a new school?
So I believe the answer is yes, but I'm going to look at Kristin, because she knows the answer.
He described it as renovation improvements to facilities, including the construction of additions and new K eight school buildings, site improvements, purchase of equipment, buses, real estate, technology, it's broader.
So yes, if, if the board decided, we don't want to build a new building, we just want to expand the current ones that we have, then yes, we could do that.
But future boards will vote on all of that.
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions for Matt? All right, thank you, Matt. We will now open the public hearing portion of this meeting. Please remember if you'd like to speak, the sign-in sheet is located at the back of the room, which is actually lights up here on my desk. Um, if you would like to speak, step to the podium, state your name and address. As mentioned earlier, you have three minutes to speak on this topic of the building project in the future. Is there anyone interested in speaking? I see no one stepping to the podium, so we will move this along. I want to thank all who participated in the hearing, we appreciate your time and interest in the building project and the future of our community. Please note, this is the first step or the second step in the legal process. The board will continue to work with administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The next item on the agenda is seven point three, which is consider approval to adopt the preliminary determination, determination of resolution for the project, the building project. Kristin, could you please summarize the preliminary determination, determination resolution for the building projects?
As we talked about with the hearing, this resolution mirrors the hearing, this resolution sets forth the maximum of the building's project.
The preliminary determination, is that me?
Um, I think you called for the motion.
Okay, now we go. All right, could I have a motion to adopt the preliminary determination, determination resolution, buildings project?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any more comments or questions?
I've got one question. If five years down the road, something's going on different down at the State House, new laws, can you totally scrap this plan and start over with whatever may be available at that point?
Yes, we, we can totally scrap this, we do not have to do that. If the law doesn't change enough that says, so like right now, if we don't do this, we have to do a referendum, unless the law changes that removes that language. If we stop this process at any point in time right now, we cannot restart it.
Right.
But, but if the laws do change and something else is available that would be better for the district, we do not have to touch this.
So next summer, if something's better, or what, it would be two years, right?
Right.
Another.
Yeah, this, this is, at current time, this is a kind of an indefinite approval.
I just wanted to make sure that you, if, if something better comes along.
If something better comes along, yes, we do not, we can totally scrap this entire thing.
It doesn't, it doesn't compel you to go this, this way.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was thinking right.
So hearing you answer that question, Dr. Schaefer, why is it that we need to do this step in knowing how much snow is thrown around in the snow globe right now that prevents seeing forward? Why does this step need to be done now? I can't wait until somewhere in twenty-six when things perhaps give a little more clarity in the snow globe.
Yeah, and, and SCA one provided an opportunity to do these types of things here, but there's a timeline in which to do that. So we have to do the preliminary portions of that to complete that timeline. Then it can sit, it can, it can sit and wait until the, the timing, opportunity is right, the need is there, uh, to do that, that next set of, of projects.
And you were going to say, in terms of those dates?
Same, the, the grandfathering.
So we grant, we, I know we grandfathered in, I guess I'm kind of wondering.
You can only get grandfathered in if you do this before the end of this year.
Before the end of this calendar.
Any other questions for Kristin? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay, all right, that would be three yeses and two nos. Mr. Bryant, Mr. Hemsel, we're both a no. Are you good, Ms. Penny? Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda, seven point four, consider approval of reimbursement resolution for the building project. Kristin, could you please summarize the reimbursement resolution for the buildings project?
Um, the reimbursement resolution is required by federal tax law. If and when the school corporation decides to move on any portion of the buildings project, um, the school could, as with other bond issues, pay from operations under any day fund and then be reimbursed. This reimbursement resolution sets the date by which you can be reimbursed.
All right, can I have a motion to adopt the reimbursement resolution, buildings project as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsel. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Same three to two vote? All right, the next item on the agenda is the second preliminary termination hearing for the maintenance project. I don't know. All right, if you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet at the back of the room, which should include your name and address as presented by the administration and its advisors. There will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the maintenance project. At the hearing, we'll ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and the topic be limited to the proposed maintenance project under construction. The notice of preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. The preliminary, the first preliminary determination hearing was held on September eighth, twenty twenty-five. At this time, I will ask that bond counsel explain the purpose of this hearing. Kristin?
As with the buildings project, this is the same hearing that's required because this project is separate and distinct from the buildings project, and again, over those thresholds that require school boards to hold two hearings for a project. Again, the hearing tonight and the resolution, you'll be asked to consider, consider the maximum amounts of this maintenance project.
We will now hear from Mr. Herbert about the process of determining and communicating the maintenance project to the community and the need for the maintenance project. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Uh, again, very similar to the building project, uh, this is giving us the opportunity to be able to have this tool in our toolbox as we move forward. Uh, this is for the maintenance project, uh, which has the maximum issuance of twenty-five million. Uh, as we stated before, that we would not, we would not take that out at one time, uh, this would be broken out over time, uh, that we would be bringing back to the board for your approval. And then this would be done in geo-bonds or general obligation bonds, uh, that would help us to, any type of maintenance that we might have throughout the district, uh, which it would include everything that we have done in the past, uh, school buses, it would, it could include Chromebooks, it could include, again, maintenance and things that we needed on our buildings, uh, and things like that. So, again, very similar to the first one, just uh, for different purposes, uh, whereas the first one would be a lease bond that's tied to the building, this one would be general obligation bonds, uh, that would just be tied to maintenance projects.
We will now hear from Stiefel Nicholas and Company Incorporated, our underwriter, about how the proposed maintenance project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
There we go, okay. Okay, so uh, same deal here with the maintenance project, uh, maximum par amount of the bonds, instead of twenty-five million, upfront professional fees of three hundred thousand, leaving the twenty-four point seven available for the hard and soft costs. Uh, estimated interest expense again is, is hopefully conservatively high, it's listed at twenty-one million, ninety thousand and sixty-seven dollars, based on a seven percent interest rate again, as was the building project. Uh, maximum annual lease rental is listed at five million, again, that's the highest payment you can make in any one year. Uh, that five million dollar payment equates to a thirty-six point nine cent maximum tax rate impact, again, that's just based on that formula. We would expect a net increase in the total tax rate, uh, to be closer to nine point six eight cents. Uh, we've already talked about schools' max annual payments as a percent of net assessed values, one point zero one percent, and then the direct and overlapping debt as a percent of AV is thirteen point two six percent. I know I went through that quick, but again, happy to answer your questions.
How do they set the max payment you can make? Is that based on the size of the, the loan?
Uh, no, so you have full authority to set that maximum payment.
You set that ourselves, okay. Does that, setting that max, maximum annual lease rental payment back, does that have any effect on what interest rate you might be charged?
Um, so it would insofar as it would allow you to pay off these bonds quicker. So say, for instance, you want to do a two million dollar deal in a few years, if you wanted to pay that back in one year, then historically, a one-year interest rate is better than a five-year or a ten- If you wanted to pay that back in one year, then historically, a one-year interest rate is better than a five-year or a 10-year or 15-year interest rate. Right now, that's not the case because short-term rates are higher, but we expect that to change over the course of the next couple of years. So you have to quicker, you can pay some, something back, you should get a lower interest rate, and you have a lower interest period of time, so interest should come down significantly, yes.
Oh, that's what, thanks.
So knowing that that's the maximum payment, Mr. Herbert, and knowing that out of that $25 million, how much we can take out any particular geo bond, depends on how much debt has fallen off.
Correct.
Um, then knowing that our max payment is the $5 million, do you anticipate keeping geo bonds as you take them out under that max so that we can make sure that we do get them paid off in a year and not have to incur interest rates for anything that's above the $5 million that we can't pay off?
Yeah, like I said, you know, for for these projects, these are going to be very specific to the current needs that we would have. So sitting here with with the snow globe, I would guess it's going to be a $1 to $2 million issuance. We are capped and limited on how much we can issue, but I know that's been roughly around $6 million here recently. But I don't foresee us needing that much at a one time. What I would ideally like to do is have this spread out so that maybe it's every other year that we are doing an issuance, and then making sure that it's paid back either within a year or two-year timeframe to, again, reduce the cost for the interest expense to try to keep that as low as possible.
So fair. I understand what you just said, where currently, we could take out, if this gets approved, we could take out right now a $3 million geo bond in 2026.
I would say, without doing the calculations, I feel like confident saying, yes, that's true.
Or a couple of million.
Yeah.
But we have some debt right now that's falling off that we can pay off.
Right, correct.
And so, hearing that said, and also thinking about prior conversations, and also thinking about what we've been talking about in terms of addressing issues with the operations fund. When do you see the first geo bond being taken out of this approval here tonight?
I would think at this point, we should be able to get to at least '27. We do still have a geo bond, actually two geo bonds, that we have a little bit of dollars left over from what those projects were kind of assigned to, that we are going to be using for now through next year. So I feel confident that we can get through '26, and it would probably be '27 before we need to start looking at issuing any more bonds at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt?
No, no, I'm good.
All right, thanks, Matt. We will now open the public hearing portion of this meeting. Remember, if you'd like to speak, please sign the sign in sheet, which I have up here at my desk. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name and address and limit your comments to the proposed project and financing. Keep any comments to three minutes and avoid being repetitive if possible. Is there anyone in the room who would like to step forward to speak? Seeing as no one is stepping to the podium, I want to thank everyone who's participated in this hearing. We appreciate your time and interest in the Maintenance Project and the future of our community. Please note that this is the second step in the legal process. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The next item on the agenda is consider approval to adopt the preliminary determination determination resolution for the Maintenance Project. Kristin, could you please summarize the preliminary determination resolution for the Maintenance Project?
Yes, as we discussed, we held the hearing with the max parameters. This is the resolution that would set those max parameters for the Maintenance Project.
Does anybody have any questions for Kristin? All right, can I have a motion to adopt the preliminary determination resolution for the Maintenance Project?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsel. One more chance for comments or questions. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, consider approval of the reimbursement resolution for the Maintenance Project. Kristin, could you please summarize the reimbursement resolution for the Maintenance Project?
As I described with the Buildings Project, this is required under federal tax law and again, would allow the school corporation to reimburse itself out of operations or rainy day from bond proceeds when and if those bonds are issued.
Can I have a motion to adopt the reimbursement resolution for the Maintenance Project?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is consider a resolution approving 10th and final supplement to the master continuing disclosure undertaking, the final high school bond issuance, Mr. Herbert, it was a mouthful.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Before you, we do have a resolution that would approve the 10th supplement to our master continuing disclosure. This is the disclosure that we use to issue the bonds for the high school project. We have issued, so far to date, two separate issues. This would be the final issue for the high school project. Once we have this issued, then these would be the final funds that we will use to complete the high school project. As we saw earlier today, we're over halfway through that project, but this is the dollars that will get us through completion and to the end of that project. So the, before you this evening, we do have this resolution that we need to approve, and that will allow us to be able to then issue the bonds here towards the end of the month to be able to have the dollars to complete the high school project. So I would ask for the board's approval of this resolution and happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
I need a motion to approve the resolution approving the 10th supplement to the master continuing disclosure undertaking, also known as the final high school bond issuance.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsel. Comments or questions?
I have a question. If Nick is able to come in under budget as he hopes, do we automatically use the rest of the money towards alternates? Or is there a possibility of saying, like, we're not going to move forward with any alternates and somehow we don't use these funds that we're taking?
So what, funds we do have, we are restricted on what we can use them for. So typically, they would be used for the alternates to try to complete additional work that we did not think we were going to be able to get done. So yes, if Nick does come in under budget, that's what we would use those dollars for.
And only at the high school?
It could be, we've tied this into the high school to south. I believe, yeah, north. This was a pretty vague, because this was part of the master campus plan. We would not use it on, I don't know if we listed administrative building. So it would be used at the high school. We might have the ability to use it at a couple of other buildings, but for the most part, it would be used at the high school.
When will you, when do we think we'll see, when will we know if there's going to be any leftover money, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be closer into mid-'27.
So it'd be right at the end, so you would just add, add on then, if you wanted something to do?
Correct, yeah.
If we had leftover, okay.
Yes.
And if you're looking at issuing these at the end of the month, there's an interest rate tied to this. What's the projection you're going to get on the interest rate here?
Uh, I will look at Matt for that one.
We've, we've sold a bunch of bond issues over the last few weeks. It's been anywhere from 3.6 to 3.9 plus or minus. A lot of stuff is going on, so I don't want to guarantee that over the next couple of weeks. But rates have have come down. The first, first eight months of the year, we were selling at four and a quarter. We have seen rates come down about a half a percent over the last couple of months as the Fed has started to lower those interest rates. So knock on wood, it'd be somewhere around three and three quarters, should be under 4%.
You're considering this timing is better than waiting until after the first of the year and see if those, that projection gets a little better on lower interest rates yet, or?
Yeah, I mean, so there's some other reasons going into why we're going to issue these bonds now. For number one, if we issue them at the beginning of the year, there's a lot longer period from the time that we receive the dollars and issue the bonds until we have to make our first payment. And so therefore, there's more interest that's capitalized there that we would have to pay. If we do it now, we get that structured into our payments for next year and we can start paying it off quicker versus letting it sit there and just build up interest. So really, that's part of the timing issue. And like Matt said, it, we just, we don't know. Rates could go up next year, so with rates being where they are right now, that's probably going to be one of the better rates that we've got on our debt. Throughout, we've got some debt that's a little bit over 4%. So if we can get something in the 3% range, that's going to be really good for the district.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Matt and Kristin, for joining us this evening. We appreciate it, thanks. Next item on the agenda, public hearing of the proposed 2025-2026 tentative agreement between D L T A and D C S C, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. This time is provided for patrons to speak specifically in regard to the proposed 2025-26 tentative agreement between the Danville Local Teachers Association and the Danville Community School Corporation. This is a one-year teacher contract proposal and was discussed by the school board during a special public meeting that we held on October 27th, 2025. The tentative agreement has been posted on the school district website. It provides for an average teacher salary increase of 1.7% plus the cost of related wage benefits. So we would open up the floor to those that may want to speak in regard to the 2025-2026 tentative agreement.
We'll open the public hearing for the tentative agreement. If anyone would like to step forward, please state your name and address. Seeing as no one is rising from their seats, we will close the public hearing on the tentative agreement and move to the next item on the agenda. Consider approval, the 2025-2026 tentative agreement between D L T A and D C S C. Dr. Schaefer?
Thank you. Yeah, the new contract features a change to the compensation model, which will feature a salary schedule in lieu of the the point-based model previously held. Each teacher who received an effective or highly effective rating will receive a $795 base increase. Additionally, teachers who have earned their early literacy endorsement will receive an additional $200 on the base. And each teacher on the schedule will then be moved to the next step on the schedule. So they'll get those increases and then move up to the next, next available step on the schedule. So total compensation increase per teacher will range from $500. That's only for one teacher who was hired at the old base, and we have to move them to the new base, which will be 52.5 from the previous 52,000. And then after that, the increases will range between $795 and $2,500 total salary increase. That represents an average increase of 1.7% plus the cost of wage-related benefits. And then the new range for base teacher pay will begin at $52,500 and end at $96,000 for the standard teacher contract. So I recommend approval, and I do want to thank the D L T A leadership for the amicable discussions we had and productive discussions throughout the bargaining process.
All right, a motion to approve the 2025-2026 tentative agreement between D L T A and D C S C as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, second? Thank you, Mr. Hemsel, comments or questions?
I have a question in reference to the average 1.7%. Do you have a breakdown of how many teachers, how many teachers do we have?
Uh, what do you have for general, 160?
Yeah.
About 160.
How many?
About 160, yes.
So you have a breakdown of that 160, how many fall into above 2%, 2% or above, and 2% or less than 2%?
Yeah, I don't know, of course, if you have that at your fingertips or not.
Uh, if you give me a second, I may.
And and some of that's going to depend, and that's part of what we have to do for ERB is is identify the the highest and the lowest increases. That's part of the requirement from ERB. So in doing that, with a, with a column model like we have now, we're going to place everybody, but there are a handful of people who just got their masters, so they're going to slide over. So those little bit larger increases, like 2,500, that's probably going to belong to somebody who just got their masters. They went on the schedule and now they're moved over. Because the other, the people who've had masters, they got placed on the the masters.
So once you put them in there, though, you still should be able to take out that 160 and say, this person do the calculation, this person is above it, this person is below it.
Correct, correct.
So it's just, they'll end up with a number of how many teachers were 2% above versus below 2%.
Right, but I, I.
Yeah, so if we look at all teachers, we said the 160, that's who are just paid out of the education fund. If you look at all teachers, we have a total of 170, because we do have some that are paid out of title dollars and some that are paid out of special education. So those teachers who would be above the 1.7% would be 74 of the 170.
Above would be how many?
Above would be 74.
So, less than half.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then my other question was, at the previous hearing last month, I'd asked about the new monies and you updated, sent that sheet in your weekly update, Dr. Schaefer. Looking at what you presented this year for the new monies and how you got to the amount of money that was available to bargain with the teachers, the layout of that looks different than it has the last two years. And it actually seems to change as I've asked about it since I've been on the board. But each year, when I ask for that, the the layout of that sheet you give me, some things are in there and some things aren't. What accounts for the differences of that explanation between the years?
Yeah, it's simply how you, how you look at it. I mean, there's, there's different ways to lay it out. You had asked specifically about, you know, what were the the total new dollars? And then how did you get to the the bargable amount? And it's, it's a little bit complex to walk through that. But essentially, you know, we're funded on a per student basis, X amount of dollars between your foundation funding and your complexity funding on top of that. So, you know, roughly $8,000 a student for each of our new students. So when you do that math, that's about 1.8 million. But what the legislature did different this year, all of our textbook reimbursement dollars that we used to get separately, they added that in, that's part of that cost, and we can only spend that on textbooks. So we have to back that out, and that number is is $443,000. So that's got to come off the top. So after that, as we bargain now, we look at total teacher costs from last year compared to this next year. And that's, that's the fairest and most accurate way to do it, is say, what are those actual costs? So by the time we were bargaining, you know, we're partway into the year, we're seeing actual payrolls come through from the new teachers we've added, plus all of our returning people. So we get a really accurate idea as you extrapolate that out over 26 pays what that cost is. And you have to look at not just the cost of the new teachers, but you've got ECA costs, we have transitional teachers in there. So that's, those costs are are more. So so that was about $1,001,000 that came out of that remaining balance. And then after that, we also did have transfer to consider for the 2026 transfer from Ed to Ops. So we backed that number out, and that actually leaves you with a deficit, okay, which is not where we want to be. So what we have done, we did earlier on, is we reduced budget in many of our non-teaching areas within the educational fund. So that provided enough relief to the tune of about $944,000 to put us back into the the black of about $470 net, net dollars remaining. And then from that, we had a little bit of deficit from our our pattern that we've talked about the last couple of years. We made up that deficit, so we're out of deficit finance for the for the law. We knew that, as I say, it's kind of like landing the plane. This is the year the plane landed, because we had about $250,000 remaining in that annual deficit to make up. So we took that out of that remaining $470,000, which left us about $220,000 then for bargaining. So the teachers essentially got all that money. Part of that was in new ECA costs, we we added a few positions. We had to pay the load, which is the the preferred benefits that teachers get upon retirement, and that left us about $169,000 that we directly put into the salary schedule. So when you look at all dollars that teachers receive, you've got all of that, plus all your new teachers, all your other teacher costs. So it's, it's actually a large percentage of the total. But yeah, getting down to it, and by the time you pay all those costs out of there, it looks like a very small number. But you have to remember, a lot of those other things that were bigger numbers also went to our teachers.
Okay, so hearing that, thinking about some of what I've been hearing in the news lately, and I think maybe my original inquiry may get directed a little bit differently. Of our new monies, do you have an idea of what percentage of that new monies is actually going into the classrooms, whether it be teacher pays or out of what you said, you got to take out the curriculum things and so forth? Is that part of what some of the people down at the State House are mentioning when they say that they want to see more monies going into the classroom?
Yeah, that's, um, depends on how you, it's going to depend on how you measure that. So, again, example, money that we would pay to an instructional assistant who's actively working in the classroom directly with kids, is that, is that money in the classroom? Absolutely. Is it being paid? Absolutely. Is it being paid to a teacher? No, it's not. So it's one, it's how you measure it. Let me give you another example. We have about four students right now who are in residential placement, okay? Our annual cost, because we have to pay their educational costs, all their residential costs, everything. We even.
Give me, tell me what that is.
We would have someone with special needs to appoint. They they cannot go to school and live here locally. They have to be in a special 24-hour-a-day, 365-day-a-week placement. And we have.
Like they live there?
They live there.
Okay.
And and everything is provided for them by that institution, wherever it may be.
Okay.
We have.
It's their classroom.
That's their classroom, that's their living quarters, that's their food, that that's everything, as well as very specialized care. So we have to pay those costs. Now, what we've been successful doing, you can apply to the state for what's called an excess grant to help get some of that reimbursed back. We've been very successful at that. Mrs. Lacy's done a tremendous job of applying for and getting those reimbursement grants. We still have to pay all that upfront. And that, this last year, everybody sitting down, was about $760,000. That's that's more than you, it's more than your transfer. And we get a good chunk of that back, but we have to pay it all. That appropriation is all paid upfront. So when it comes back to us, it just lands back in the cash balance, which we actually, we've talked about that, we use some of that for our future transfer. Because it's sort of one-time money by the time it comes back. Not one penny of that gets counted towards our teacher cost. Because the the legislation hasn't caught up with that, saying, yeah, that's an allowable expense to count towards your teacher expenditures. Now, I agree, when you're providing 24-hour service, that's not all educational expense. Which begs the question, if a student's in class roughly eight hours a day, why do public schools get required to pay the other sixteen hours a day for all the other care? It's because nobody else pays it. That's why.
So there's not an agreed-upon calculation of for every school corporation when the state gives them new monies?
Correct.
Of how they're, how you calculate?
There's.
How much of that new monies has actually ended up in a classroom?
Correct, correct. So and you'll see, and you're you're maybe you see I S B A publications and things, the teacher increases we've been seeing here over the last month or two very widely. We have schools here locally that that are not able to give a base increase. They're just giving stipend increases, and that's what they can do. And we've seen other schools that are giving, you know, a decent on a percentage basis, a fairly, you know, large amount. Those are few and far between, but we're seeing quite a discrepancy this year in what schools are able to do. And a lot of it is because how curriculum materials are hitting schools and how S C A one is hitting local operating funds. That's part of it as well. And again, you know, just like I mentioned with paying some of those other costs, not all schools run into that. They may not have those types of other expenses to 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 make, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda. Consider approval of the 2025-2026 classified staff wage increases. Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you. And again, in the packet is the recommendation and the financial breakdown for the classified support staff wage increase. The recommendation is for a 1.6 increase. Now, that is a a straight percentage. It's not an average. That is a 1.6 increase for each qualified individual. I do recommend approval. And again, as as we talked about a little bit, but I know we're later in the bargaining period here, but approval at this time would allow us to get back pay calculated and raises to begin as early as the, I think it's the November 21st payroll. And that raise will be retroactive back to July 1st, 2025 for our support staff who, again, who are qualified, who are here working. So I'd recommend a 1.6% increase for our classified support staff group.
All right. I need a motion to approve the 2025-2026 classified staff wage increases as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda. Consider approval of administrator salary increases for 2025-2026. Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you. And attached below is a recommendation and financial breakdown for the administrative employees recommendation. This increase is is based on the teacher increase, and it would result in an average increase of 1.5%. And now that's classified and certified administrators together. The increase is, it's a flat per-day increase based upon the average teacher per-day increase. So the per diem is then multiplied with that, you know, per-day increase is multiplied by the length of the respective administrative contract. That therefore it accounts for more than 185 days is is those administrative contracts are. Again, we we've talked about this a little bit. I mentioned this last year as we got to this point. Teacher, the teacher increases have to be given in flat amounts. With your classified support staff, you can give those in percentage amounts. Now, it used to be teacher increases were always given in percentage increases, so you saw those teacher schedules, you know, go like this. And we've talked about compression over time with teachers. That's because you're constantly having to give flat amounts, which is a higher percentage at the bottom and a lower percentage at the top. So it naturally compresses the teacher scale. Now, it's on a much lesser scale because you have fewer people. But as we give flat increases to administrators over time, we've kind of seen the same thing. It's again, much smaller scale. We've seen that happen a little bit. And we're not trying to increase that. What we're trying to do is kind of maintain it. And the the trouble is, if you give a a percentage increase every year, it starts doing this. And if you give a flat increase every year, it starts doing this. And I'd mentioned this last year, I believe, but to me, it kind of makes sense to maybe alternate a little bit and try to just maintain where you're at. One year you give a percent increase, it might grow very slightly, and the next year you give a flat, and it may shrink very slightly. So that's why we've seen this go from a flat to last year doing a percent to this year doing a flat. And I might anticipate a percent next year, just to kind of keep that margin there and not not grow it, not shrink it. Just try to maintain that. And that's true not only as we look at our highest to lowest-paid administrators, but also when you look at the the highest-paid teacher, particularly on a per diem basis, compared to your lowest-paid administrator on a per diem basis. There's a, there's extra obligations and and responsibility to go with those administrative positions. So you want to keep a little bit of, a little bit of room there to recognize that. So that that's the nature, and that's why we've kind of toggled back and forth.
So hearing you say that.
Let's give me, let's do a motion and then we'll. All right. Need a motion to approve administrator salary increases for 2025 to 2026.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Second? Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions?
So hearing your explanation there, you do have in one instance, you have a staff member in there that's administrator that started July 1st with a contract. And that contract was approved for the 25-26 school year and I think the 26-27 school year. And they're on the list to get a raise this fall. How do you support that decision?
Yeah, and that's, and that's, I would say that's not new. I mean, that's that's, and it's really just to try to keep where we where we place people, to try to keep them. And we do the same thing with teachers. As they come in, we place our teachers where they're at compared to their their peers with, you know, whatever their relative experience and degree levels are. So when you you move everybody else, we try to move those new teachers with them so they kind of stay positioned in the same spot. That's why, be the same reason for the administrators.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda. Recognition of state tuition support letter. Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Sorry, just clicking through here. Attaching your packet is the letter from the Indiana Department of Education Office of Finance. That letter, which we we publicly acknowledge, and that is our duty to publicly acknowledge tonight, serves as a notice that the Form 9 financial information, now again, Form 9 is not Department of Education. Form 9 is determined by State Board of Accounts, when you think of it that way. That info indicate, that form indicates that less than 62% of applicable state tuition support was spent on teacher compensation during fiscal year '25. While we acknowledge that information as it's presented, it falls short of the 62% rule. The fact is that Danville schools actually did spend more than the required applicable tuition support on teacher compensation at a rate we can verify of 62.4% for fiscal year 2025. So even though the Form 9, the way those are categorized, doesn't indicate that, we actually did spend the required share or more, 62.4% for the fiscal year. So the the difference between the rate and the rate based on the information from Form 9, what the difference is, we had a couple of coding errors that were detected after the Form 9 was filed. So that resulted in a few teacher expenditures that were rightful expenditures. It should be counted towards that 62% teacher expenditures, but they didn't get counted, they didn't get captured as such on the Form 9, which made our expenditures appear to be less than they actually were. So and and those were in, we have some teachers who want to transition to teaching permits. That coding number was off. We caught it later. So we we moved that, re-categorized, and got those in the right category. We had a few ECAs, some were E C A payments. They were in a different group. We had to move those. And then, and it's a really odd thing, but the the dollars we pay towards Wayne Township for special education services and for career and technical education services, those do count towards the teacher expenditure, at least some of those do. And that's one that didn't get captured right away either. So between those three, there was about a 2% difference in what we actually spent, what it looked like we spent on the Form 9. So our duty is to publicly acknowledge, we got the letter, we posted on our website, we can put a short explanation, just as I've explained here, of why that is, what that is, and that's that's it. That's what it comes down to.
So in in your update, you'd indicated that they kind of questioned this last year? And you had to make an adjustment last year?
Yes.
I don't remember hearing about that in any until this recent update from you.
Right, yeah. Because last year, there was not a requirement, the this requirement, if you miss it, to bring it to, you know, public acknowledgement, that was not in the law last year. So and again, we've never, I I checked with our treasurer this afternoon. I said, you know, I I have never, I said, I want to make sure she hadn't either, and I just missed it. We've never received like a a protocol for, because these laws keep changing. I mean, in 2021, you had a 45% rule. Last year became a 62% rule, and then it became sort of publicly knowledgeable this year. Next year it goes to 65%, and they keep changing the categories, they change the codes. We've never received from Office of Finance or anybody else that we know of, at least that we're aware of, a breakdown of, okay, here's the process you have to follow exactly, and here are the timelines for that. So I went back and looked, and I I provided those to you as well. Last year in October, we had, so we caught a couple of codes that were off, and we acknowledged that, we sent that information to the Office of Finance. And they're like, okay, you'll just need to indicate it on your Form 9 in January. It's all there was to it. And we've never received anything that is really going to be different than that this year. So we got a, we got an informal email in August, at the end of August, that said, well, you know, you can change your Form 9. Well, you don't go change Form 9s without authorization from the State Board of Accounts to do that. Otherwise, you get an accounting issue. So we're thinking, we we don't need to change our Form 9. We didn't change our Form 9 last year. Why would we do that? We're not going to risk that on an audit. So and the the letter said we would get notification in September. Well, we never got any notification in September. So then in October, we get like a final notice that, hey, here's your percentage. So we're like, hmm, I guess we didn't understand that process, but the process was never really laid out for us to understand. So that was a source of a little bit of our frustration. I think we understand it a little better now. But at the same time, we did make the expenditures. I will tell you next year at 65% because of some of the things we've talked about tonight, that will be very difficult for us as a district to to meet that number.
I guess that was going to be my question, if you know already, because it sounds like you know ahead of time what the percentage is going to be set at.
Yeah, that's set in statute.
That's set in statute, so you know what, six months before start of the calendar year, quarter? But it just seems like we've cut that margin off of close at 0.4% to meet that, as opposed to trying to find a way within the Danville difference to come in a percent and a half above it. And this is by the state asking us to do this. This is kind of another version of asking us to stand on the pail at the entrance and pound on the drum saying, we apologize for our mistake.
Yeah, it's kind of asking us to squeeze blood out of a turnip when they, you know, they keep pushing those up. But when you look at state funding to schools over the last several years, it has not kept pace with the inflation. So inflation, not only is the requirement going up, but the inflationary pressures are eroding away at what we're actually receiving year to year. So it's harder and harder, without anything else changing, it's harder and harder to make those ends meet, let alone increase what you're doing. And then as S C A one rolled out, now there's even a greater need to help support your operations fund, which again, has very few fungible dollars there. So and then, as I pointed out, when you have other expenditures, such as the the residential placement dollars, again, those are dollars that, you know, we're happy to spend those, happy to support the kids and families. But it is a lot of dollars that are going out that you're not able to spend on other things, be it education or operations. And they're dollars that we get zero credit. And that was equivalent to 3%. We've been at 65% this year if we could count those dollars, but we can't count those dollars. And why? We don't know. And I understand they might not let us count 100% because you're paying all of the residential costs on top of the educational cost. But then why are we needing to pay the residential cost to schools? And it's not anything unique to Danville schools. I mean, that's.
But the difficulty in meeting the 65 next year, isn't that part of the reasoning that we've been asking or discussing? Trying to address what's being done and what we're spending in the operations fund. And that's, I guess, why I didn't vote this year for the 15% transfer from ed to ops. Is because, again, I think we need to stay away from getting close to that 15% as much as we can, and we're making that effort and those challenges to get there. Which would allow us to maybe try to address and in the Danville difference, meet the state of the letter of the law by more than four tenths of a percent. That's just my thoughts on that.
Sure.
What's the penalty if we don't meet it next year?
Same as this year. You have to post and acknowledge it.
Any idea how many school corporations across the state don't meet that? I mean, I know there are some that don't meet that.
Yeah, I I don't.
62.
There's actually, I think in one of the I S B A daily updates here in the last week, I think there was a link, there was a link to a analysis that they did. I think that then.
In the last week?
Within the last week.
Okay.
Within the last seven, 10 days.
Okay.
I've never seen it, but the number that they reported does not stand out in my mind.
Any other questions on this agenda item? All right, moving right along. The next item on the agenda. Consider approval of gift donations to D C S C. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Before this evening, we do recommend approval of the donation of a scissor lift. This is for our band program at the high school. We did have a donor who is working with a local equipment company to be able to provide this for our band so they can use it when they are outside. Our director uses this to kind of oversee the movement and can use it for different things there. It's been fully serviced and it is ready to go. Anticipated average cost of this will be roughly about $400 per year just to do the maintenance and the service of it. But for our cost, it's actually only $1, and that's just so that the equipment company can use that to kind of tie it to their records so that they can make sure they track it through. So we are very appreciative of that donation from M H Equipment and would ask for the board's approval of this donation.
I need a motion to approve the gifts donations to D C S C as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Any comments or questions?
I think it's very nice for this company to do this. Is there any room on that lift that we could stencil? I don't think it's necessarily donated by, but thank you. So that anytime that lift is moved around, it's it's no kind of.
Yeah, we can definitely check on that.
Some sort of recognition on it would be.
Sure.
Kind of knows, I mean, it's nice that they've done that.
I did, I did do a little rough research on the value, and it's probably a $4,000 to $8,000 value gift, which is very, I agree, very, very nice.
Again, you just, to me, it's stenciled in white paint on them, but if there's room to do it, but.
Sure. Yeah, we can definitely check into that.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of surplus obsolete equipment. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Uh, before you can see, Mr. Yoder, uh, provided us some information. We have several football helmets, uh, that have, uh, surpassed their useful life. Uh, they are typically good for ten years. We do have to take those, we send them back to the company every year to have those recertified, but after ten years, they will no longer do that. Uh, and so they would deem those to be unsafe, so obviously we don't want our students using those. Uh, so we are going to be disposing of those, and I will say that Mr. Rector and Mr. Yoder have come up with the idea to take those, uh, and kind of build them or turn them into lamps, uh, which they in turn hope to be able to sell to whoever would be interested. Uh, and the proceeds of this sale will go back to the athletic department there at the middle school. So, uh, again, just asking for the approval that these would be disposed of, and we will take care of those. Uh, and again, happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve the surplus obsolete equipment as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hensel, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report. Dr. Schaefer.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's getting late, I'll make this quick, but wanted to make sure the board's aware of this, uh, effort that's going on. It's a countywide effort, and I think, I think it's a really good one. It's going to take a little while to get there, but, uh, it's through our, our service center. The county school districts and a, and a few local employers are working collaboratively, uh, to develop a career coaching model to benefit our students. And Dr. Walker's been working, particularly with the career coaching model, over the last year, year and a half now, uh, moving that forward. It's, it's been a, a good effort. Uh, but that process is going to assist students, high school students in particular, in meeting, uh, their work-based learning requirements that are going to be necessary to graduate on the new diploma track beginning in twenty twenty-nine. Uh, and we're referring to it as a career collaboration model, because we're working together on it for careers for kids. Um, it developed that along with input from Hendrix County businesses. And it's going to include a focus on career pathway, uh, development, job shadows, internships, and career coaching. Uh, so we have joint teams, uh, from the Hendrix County schools, that are working to develop a common guidance document. Um, and that, you know, it's a process, and a series of processes to help guide all of our students uh, towards opportunities that are equitable for the school districts and equitable for the employers, uh, here across the, our area, across the county, and probably into Indianapolis and surrounding counties where we have employers. Uh, we also anticipate a common software platform being used to help connect students with business shadowing and internship opportunities directly with employers. There's a platform we're working on where employers can, my, my general, can sort of post to, opportunities to it, and kids can post eventually resumes and get connected. There's an intermediary in the middle that helps to connect kids and employers. That's on down the road, but that platform exists and something we're, um, looking at through a grant through the service center of acquiring. Um, so, the, I think the neat thing about it is, uh, one of the neat things, the Hendrix College Network is our intermediary here in Hendrix County. They help to be a connector, a convener, if you will, to try to bring these groups together. Um, and they're working alongside the, uh, the CIEC staff, which is our service center, uh, to assist the schools and employers. And when we're successful in the effort, uh, we're going to be first in the state to successfully, um, put this kind of model together with a countywide multiple schools, um, model, uh, to do that. I think our students, especially those in ninth grade this year, uh, are counting us, provide them those types of opportunities. I think it's really rewarding to see those kind of things coming together for their benefit. Uh, I appreciate the cooperation from the service center, from Hendrix College Network, and from the other school districts here in the county, to try to put together a model like this that works for thousands of kids here in Hendrix County. So I, it's a neat thing, and it's sort of in the early part of it. We've had a short series of meetings, we have more coming up, uh, to begin to build the guidance document, uh, and the processes that will occur. Maybe similar processes then in each school district across the county. But helping those kids, um, get into those types of work-based learning experiences are going to have to have to graduate.
Does opportunity have any ties to whether you're on level with the number of credits you're supposed to have, target per year? Meaning that if you're credit deficient, you can't post your resume or apply for one of these positions given your X number of credits below where you might need to be?
Yeah, we, we haven't got to that level yet of determining that. I, I certainly think there's going to be something in there. I mean, you're going to have to, you're going to have to be on track to get into the work-based learning piece where that's going to fit into your schedule. So I, I think that's sort of that baseline, particularly in that freshman year.
All have to have the CTE at some point, right?
Yeah, that, well, depends on which, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, which badge you're going for, but yeah. More, more for some, less for others, but they're all going to have some level of, of hours.
Okay.
The estimated implementation of this?
I'd say we're what, a year out, probably? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think they hope to work, um, have meetings for the rest of this school year, and then we'll start the, um, let the software in place for August of next year.
So do we anticipate then seeing a greater number of students that might just be at the high school in the morning and then off to a job shadow or something? Few days a week, or a week, or a student who's in Area thirty-one? Like, that's a CTE, isn't it?
Yeah, I do think there'll be an increase. I mean, everywhere from, on these new diplomas, there's everywhere from seventy-five hours to six hundred and fifty hours that a student needs of work-based learning. Um, so I think, I think we're going to have to have systems in place so that kids can get those hours. Some of them will happen after the school day, weekends, you know, normal jobs that kids have. Um, but I think a lot of them will have to take place during-
Is this paralleling or replacing what used to be referred as the capstones?
So those are still in, so they still have the CTE pathways, um, which are sort of separate from the work-based learning hours. So some of them, you'll be able to count depending on what those, like, CTE hours, what you're doing during that time. Some of them will count towards both, but you still have the CTE pathways with the completers going all the way through the, those capstones, and then you have your work-based learning hours.
Will we have to hire someone to help manage those kids on the diploma? I mean, it seems like a lot more work than what a school counselor would do.
It is definitely a lot of work. Um, I've been talking with, uh, Mr. Claude Felter to try to figure out how we can be creative. Obviously, we're in a, you know, a time where we, we don't have the funds to add a whole lot of staff. So how can we be creative with the staff that we have? Currently, one of our business teachers is doing it for part of her day.
Did, we used to have a part-time history teacher that then also-
So now it's a business, now it's a business teacher, so it's part of the business department. I think we're just going to have to be creative about, about more of her day, or whoever that work-based learning coordinator is, to be able to go out to businesses and, you know, meet with kids during the day. Right now, she does that for part of the day, but then she also has classes that she teaches. And so it's difficult for her to get out into workplaces and so-
We'll have to, as, as we look at hiring additional staff over time, depending on what enrollment does, that will be something we probably need to prioritize somewhat too, in that list of adding that other half position, or whatever it may be, to, to get us there. Um, and, and we think it'll be a little bit of a trickle, because you have freshmen and they're going to start picking up those hours. I think by the time when they hit their junior year, that's when we'll start to feel it hit a little bit more. Uh, and then particularly in your senior, to make sure they've completed those experiences they need for the diploma. So we'll have a chance to kind of see this thing develop, but having this system in place here within this next year, I think is really going to help us uh, be prepared to, to meet those challenges.
So if we implement this, the software, whatever, come next August, is that only open to the class of twenty twenty-nine and beyond, or will it be open to the other classes that are in the school now?
No, I think we'll still have upperclassmen that, because we have, we have current students right now, they're in work-based learning and doing internships. So they'll get to partake as well.
Okay.
Um, I think the tracking will look different with this freshman class than it will the older, older students. They're enrolled in the class, but don't need the hours like our current freshmen and then beyond will need.
Any other questions? All right, next item on the agenda is announcements. Thanksgiving break will be November twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five. Our next regular meeting will be December eighth at six-thirty here in the district training room in the Danville Community Middle School. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
I have a question before we adjourn.
Yep.
Um, are we gonna, can we tonight go ahead and set up our meeting that we have in December?
Yep.
I would ask that we do that after the regular December board meeting. So that we are able to include things up to and conversations through that December board meeting as part of what goes on in that meeting.
Right.
So either the week, so our December board meeting is what, December?
Eighth.
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 So either the ninth through the eleventh or the week after.
All right, we've historically always done it the first week of December, just because we start to get into, I mean, I have several different family members coming in the month of December, early December, to visit.
Well, I understand changing plans. I experienced that here recently.
I will just go ahead and like, you know, I won't, the first week in December, I won't be around.
Let's, um, adjourn this meeting, and then we'll have a discussion about what's available. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.